Okay, the next item on our agenda is the holding of a public hearing on the draft fiscal year 2021 and 22 Village Budget. The hearing is held in accordance with the state statute and notice duly published in the Daily Herald. Upon opening the public hearing, we will have a presentation made by Trustee Kritzmeyer and interim manager Bill Balling. I'm not sure how that's exactly going to go yet regarding the general fund and the capital fund portions of the budget. After that presentation, we will allow the opportunity for members of the public to comment on the general fund and capital portions of the budget only. Please note that the hearing tonight will be continued until April 13th, 2021, at which time we will resume the other components of the fiscal year 2122 budget. If you wish to comment during tonight's public hearing, please use the raise hand function or otherwise just raise your hand if you're on video or try to speak up. And I just ask that you wait to speak until I've acknowledged you. To make sure everyone has had a chance to speak, we'll try to or may limit you to three minutes, in which case you can have another chance to speak once everyone has done so. Note that the public comment period is for comments and not for questions and answer. After the public comments are completed, we will have a motion to formally continue the hearing until April 13th. Anyone who speaks tonight can speak again on April 13th on the remaining elements of the budget. Once the hearing for tonight is continued, the Village Board may then have a discussion regarding the draft budget. Please keep in mind that this is a draft and it budget, so it's exactly that. As such, the draft budget may undergo changes based on the comments heard tonight and the board's further review. With those introductory comments, I now formally open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment? Yes?
May I kind of ask you to put up that PowerPoint just to sort of revisit where we were last time we discussed this as a board on the general and capital funds and then the tweaks that were made and then what you can expect a little bit for the next portions, the other funds portions. Is that fair?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Now, the question I have is, the question I have is, you just sent me an email. Is it different from the email prior or is it, I opened up the PowerPoint that you sent me and then there's another email? Is there a newer one?
No, use the PowerPoint. The other email is just simply the Excel where I added some percentages, but I think the PowerPoint is the way to go here. And if we get any questions from the public that ask us to go into the details, then you can go there.
All right, let me share the screen. Yeah, go ahead.
The only reason I did that was that the one that was provided for this public hearing had them both pasted together and I made some changes to the PowerPoint. So in order to have the other thing come along for the ride, I gave it to you.
All right, well, let's see if this works. Can you see my screen?
There we go. Perfect. Perfect. So I will speak to the board, but then of course to anybody in the public who wants to make comment on this. Overall, from, if anybody watched or listened last time, we talked about our general fund revenues. What are the key parts that drive this, that drive our forecast revenues of $3.88 million? Sales tax, we're looking at up 3% from the run rate that we were experiencing through December of 2020. That's actually accelerating now that we've got more actuals in. We're actually running something like 28%. This budget is 28% versus last year's budget. Recall last year when we set this budget, we had no idea what COVID was going to hand us. The uncertainty was very high and therefore our conservative budget for fiscal year 2021 was also very, very high on the conservative level. So we've been pleasantly surprised on sales tax. So going forward in next year, we want to basically take what we've learned that we have a very favorable mix of sales tax and put that into the general revenue budget. Income tax comes from the Illinois Municipal League projection per Bill Balling's conversations with representative there. Springfield may in fact elect to hold back 10% of what they would normally turn over to local municipalities. It's called the Local Government Distributive Tax, that LGDT you see at the very bottom. So that may in fact negatively affect us $88,000. We've not reflected that in the budget. That can be something we can either reduce that budget or we can just retain some surplus and keep monitoring it. Use tax is the tax that we pay from things like that you order on the internet. Regulations changed as of January and the effects are not fully known, so we're going to be tracking that, but using the Illinois Municipal League projections. Overall, in revenues based on, you know, you can see these comments here, we made no changes on the revenue assumptions versus our last conversation on March 8th. In general expenses, we did make some slight tweaks. Wages and related benefits, you know, we've got a village manager to hire and so there's still some fluctuation or fluidity in that. Lake County Sheriff contract is done. Public Works, we made no changes nor in engineering technology. And I'll come back to technology because we did have some questions from the board last time. Changes since then, we added a board workshop based on the conversations that we had as a board. $15,000 for a facilitator and facilities. Given where we are in hiring the next manager, felt it prudent to add another month for retaining the current interim manager. And so we wanted to make sure that was in the budget. And then some slight increase in our communications overall. So overall, just under $50,000 difference in expenses therefore are just under $50,000 less surplus than our last discussion. And that surplus again, we'll be monitoring because we do have unknowns in terms of what Springfield will do. Will our sales tax trend continue to hold up? Will we have in fact on this use tax favorably or unfavorably affect us? So that is on the general fund. If we go to the next page, please, I think it's pictures. Yes, general fund and general expenses. So people who think in pictures, again, on the left, general fund revenues, no change since we last discussed this as a board last week, I mean to the last meeting. On the right, general fund expenses, just under $50,000 difference driven by the three things that I outlined. So you can see the largest component is wages and benefits, followed by Lake County Sheriff Contract, what I'm calling snow and mo. By the way, we are now something like I think $65,000 over our current year budget for snow and salt, mostly snow. Salt is under. Office and operations, communications, economic development, and so on. On the general budget, are there any, I don't know if you want to run this this way, comments or questions at this point and just sort of keep it to the general budget?
You're muted.
Yeah, I know. I saw that as it was telling me. Let's open it up. Is there anyone that would like to make any public comments right now?
Just maybe a question, is that okay?
Well, you could. We were going to save the board questions till later, so.
That's fine, thank you.
Oh, the fact that you spoke, Chris, thank you. You had asked some questions about technology and sort of like we changed, we added or changed our website a year ago and what were the results. And subsequent to that, Village Intern Denise sent out some stats on that, but basically the, since we launched the new internet technology using Unicode, web traffic has more than doubled, mostly it's in the fall. It gets a little seasonal, but it has, without even a whole lot of fanfare, it has more than doubled. As well, our E news open rate is something like 46%. As a marketer in the corporate sector, that would be astonishing. I don't know all of the, but it looks like that's probably holding its own in terms of the local municipality sector.
I take it no comments, so just keep going. I know we'll get, we'll get the board.
You got, no, no problem. Capital budget sources, really no changes to the capital budget in terms of sources or projects. We had previously discussed capital projects in a separate meeting before that with Trustee O'Connor and Village Engineer Jeff Perry. So really the projects have not changed and the sources at this point have not changed. Our infrastructure tax is conservatively down from the current year. If in fact our overall taxes, sales taxes continue to come in favorably, then we may have some additional money there. We got a great surprise from the North Cougar bid that came in just before last time we met and then the grants that we're pursuing there. MFT funds are actually a mix of MFT funds and this rebuild at Illinois, but that again, we're in good shape where we are. So no changes here since the board and public last saw these projects. And overall, this is the kind of stacking on that reflects our, what are our sources of funds? We have $3.88 million in forecast general revenues. General revenues are money, cash that we can use for any purpose whatsoever, you know, appropriate to the village. We have two sources that are very, that are limited in their use. MFT funds and infrastructure tax can be used for infrastructure and road use only. And then we have money coming in for specific project grants, only for those projects. So we go from the most general flexible revenues to the most restricted revenues. And then the uses are on the side and you can see the surplus reflected in there. Again, we're trying to be very conservative. Two years ago, when we had to try and make lemonade out of a box truck crashing into the bridge and shake the sofa cushions to figure out how to restructure, rebuild all of that while the cover was still off, we've now come to a point where we're replenishing our general reserves to a point that we'd like to have them at. And the surpluses will continue to contribute there.
Is that it? Is there more?
That is it. This is, as I said, I'm happy to go into any of the specific details, but in terms of last we spoke, happy to go into any line item in the Excel spreadsheet. If I don't know it, Denise and Bill probably do, but we're in pretty good shape.
And I just wanted to point out too, we didn't mention it, but we went real conservative on building permits and I think the board is in for a pleasant surprise because Jim and Margarita have both said they're picking up calls almost daily about process and procedures. And of course, we just approved that wonderful subdivision out on, or will out on Cuba Road that's going to bring some activity in play. So almost certainly we're going to beat out our, our building permit revenue, which we really limited it to remodelings and stuff. So that should be a pleasant surprise for the board as we move into that. And if we create a surplus from that, I know Trustee Nora pays careful attention to that and reports to the board monthly on cash flow and revenues. I think we're in for a very pleasant surprise on that. So I feel good we don't have to build this budget to balance it on anticipated building activities, but I think we're going to have it this year. So that's a, that's a real positive issue. And just to underscore what Ann had said, we've been coordinating with the Illinois Municipal League. They're our lobbyist in Springfield. They're trying like heck to beat down that 10% holdback on the state. I mean, it's really pocket picking, to be honest with you. It's, it's an entitlement that we should have under the distribution and they're treating it as an essential need for states to period our needs. So again, we've made this budget work with that included. I mean, we're going to be successful, but if it isn't, we still got a really strong budget here. So with the, the new manager coming on board soon, I think that's going to be a real leg up in terms of keeping us moving. And Ann and Denise have been amazing resources for the village in putting this budget together and assisting me in coordinating some of the tasks and functions that are in there. So I think what we've presented is a sound budget, very defensible budget and one that shows a lot of careful forethought in terms of how we, what our next steps are.
Yeah, it's 295 capital fund surplus and a $517,000 general fund surplus. So that's good news. Very good.
Pretty good without rolling any property taxes in there. So that's a pretty good accomplishment. Board's got to feel good for that.
I think we should feel pretty good also about all the capital projects we have already been able to check the box on too.
Let me do, let me do this before, so let me make sure there's no public comment out there.
I have a fast question if there's no comment.
Well, what I need to do though, if there isn't, I'm going to close the, or continue the public hearing and ask for a formal vote and then we can go in and discuss, discuss it. Any, so in fact procedurally, that's how I should go here, right? You're muted too, so.
Yes, that would be the step.
Okay, so again, I'm going to ask one more time, are there, does anyone wish to comment? If not, then I'm going to look for a motion to formally continue the public hearing at the next regularly scheduled board meeting.
No votes.
Okay, moved by Trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by Trustee O'Reilly. That is a roll call.
Trustee Michelle.
Oh, you're muted.
Oh, there you are. Sorry guys. Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Nora.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
And Trustee Browski.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Okay, I don't know who raised their hand first, but Bobby, you have yours up now.
It's, it's not eight o'clock yet, so I'm still raising my hand. I don't know if I got smarter or the budget got easier to understand. I tend to think it's the latter. I can't tell you how, how good it is to work in this because it's so clear. However, it generates certain questions that I have. One is, we have a line item for the prosecutor and I believe it's at 13,000. I'm not looking at it. It is what it is, but where's the income?
It would be on the citations and fines. The first page of revenues, 35300 and 35202.
Okay, so it went from 30,000 to 15,000?
To 16,000, yeah. The citations went from 30 to 15, but we only yielded 10.9. So we're anticipating a recovery with increased commercial activities, people returning to work, things of that sort.
Okay, so we're spending more, more on prosecuting than we get in?
Well, there's a possibility of that because you, you know, you have, you have fixed costs on prosecution and obviously we try to, we try to develop our, you know, that pattern to be in balance. But when we looked at the numbers, the, you know, we think, you know, about 16 is where we're going to end up.
I've never met the prosecutor. I would love to have the prosecutor come talk to us as a board, whether workshop or public meeting and talk about what is the, what, what does the firm do and what are their, you know, headwinds and tailwinds? Because we keep being told that judges don't want to, you know, judges don't want to help us keep people from crashing into the bridge.
And is that even, even in our income? Because is that, is that a state thing or a village thing? And, and, and something that really I wonder about is when we do the finance, financial picture of having the sheriff, do we ever incorporate in that study, what kind of fines are they gathering in Long Grove that they get to keep? And would that change the picture for having our own department? I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah, I think intuitively would say we're better off without our, our own police department. Given our size and.
Well, I think, I think I know that too, but I also don't know how much they're, they're gathering in the community and, and I don't know how much they're not gathering for us. I don't know. It's, it's, it's a total empty vessel for me.
Bobby, unless, unless I made a mistake, I, we're only budgeting 13,000 in expenses for our prosecutor and we're generating more than that in income.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, on, it's, it's account 53401 in the general fund.
Right.
And I'm showing 13 in expenses out to Smith and Lala Zerni and I'm showing more than that in income.
But what was our actual?
Well, our actual came in at, let me see, we did about 6200, our forecast is through 1231 is 6,200 and through 1231, 10.9. But again, this is, you know, we base this estimate actual through 1231. We wanted to trend what was going on for eight months. We will have a year end actual coming up in the end of April. But I, you know, again, we, we certainly want to cover our costs with the cost of prosecution to the revenue received. It's a very sensitive point, obviously. We want to receive the revenue that we're entitled to. We don't want to, we don't want to use citations as an income stream necessarily from a, well, for a couple.
Well, I don't want to see us having to pay for it either.
Right, right. Yeah, right, right now.
And so I think Ann makes a great, great suggestion. Let's, let's bring the prosecutor in and, and have him give us a class and maybe Vic could. I don't know. All I know is I don't know anything about it. The other thing is about the 106, is it 168 that the downtown gets on their SSA?
165.
Okay, 165. With one of the buildings gone, will that decrease or will it be spread over everyone?
Actually, go ahead, Ann, I'm sorry.
I, as I recall, they spread it over the available square footage, so I think everybody goes up.
Okay, okay. There was a hiccup in it this year.
We will get the full yield on that, on that amount. It'll change what people individually pay.
You may recall that we are supposed to get the tax roll from the.
Right, right. That was the hiccup.
HCLGBA.
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 I got it right. And we didn't get this year, so we simply, we simply replicated the prior years and the prior year that building was there. The demolition of the building was not reflected in the tax roll we used this year, but it would spread it differently among everybody unless they chose to reduce the overall levy.
Okay, okay. And then 389, it must be 00389 miscellaneous, went from 206,000 to zero and I didn't quite click with what that is.
I'm sorry, are you on revenue or expense and where?
Okay, let me, let me, let me find it.
I think it's bottom of page, revenue, Anna, at the bottom, I think Bobby's looking at the miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, revenues.
Oh, miscellaneous, oh. That is an interesting one. So the, this year, the budget for that was $206,000. Really the actual is next to nothing on that. And I'm not, I'll be really, I'm not sure why Dave, why Dave forecast it that way, but if you look at the forecast this current year was transfer in of 124 and miscellaneous revenues of 206. I think he was expecting that 206 would be the benefit from refinancing the Sunset Grove bond. In fact, it all comes in as transfer in. And so it, so if you think about it, the total budget was 124 plus 206, so 330 and what we actually got was 391. So next year, we're going to forecast it just as a transfer in because that's how it really works is it gets collected in the Tiff District against those bonds. At the end of the year, they say, we don't need all of the money we collected and we transfer it to the general fund. Make sense?
Okay, it does, it does. It just was a big number.
For sure.
And we're not going to pretend this year. So thanks, that, that answers my question. But I will tell you one thing that, that I draw from our numbers is that in, in the amount of activity over at Brothers Field and, and the brewery, we have got to do that parking lot. We have got to figure out a way to do it. It's, it's a liability waiting to happen.
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate that. Other comments from the board, I could just go around really quick. Chris, you're being quiet, you're raising your head. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, a couple of things, Bill, thank you. Appreciate that. Just a question on the last subject to start. So Denise or Ann, do we have any invoices from the prosecutor that we could pull? I'd kind of like to know if we just have like a billing statement or something. I mean, I'd be happy to call him tomorrow and just, you know, play, play Chris, play dumb guy and just ask him like if they have even a contract with us. I don't even know how that works.
We get invoices from them.
We get, can you give us a couple of copies of those? And Vic, do you know if we have a contract with these guys?
I presume we have an engagement letter. They have been Village Prosecutor for some time. I'm not quite sure when they started, but typically they would have an engagement letter.
Okay, I mean, I could call over there and play dumb new guy, you know, even though I'm not new. Okay, to the, to the point of the budget though, will the detailed or is the detailed budget posted and does everybody know where to find it if they wanted to, if the public wanted to scrutinize line by line?
Yes, I think it's posted, Denise.
Denise? Yeah.
It is posted on the website.
All right.
It was posted Friday, right?
Okay, thank you, thank you. I mean, obviously I didn't check. And then Ann, you made reference to, we're not sure what the use tax is going to be. Is there like a one sentence description summary of what the concerns are?
I, if you listen to any of the economic, some of the Economic Development Commission, I didn't this morning talking, the regulation has changed from the way it's being collected to now being collected at the destination. One would think that given the demographics of Long Grove and how much we may or may not have ordered online during the last 12, 13 months, that this may be a positive surprise for us, but apparently there's some oddness and weirdness of, well, but if Amazon ships to you from Kenosha, that's different than if they ship to you from Naperville. So we're not sure how that shakes out and whether it's going to be forecastable. Does that sort of address your question?
Yeah, thanks. I understand it. I appreciate the answer. I don't know if I understand the entire issue yet, but that's fine.
The issue was before was per population, per, per person, right? And so you got a share of whatever came back to us. And now it's supposed to be based on actual, but what is actual and how do, you know, it's all, it depends on how it gets reported and are they going to report it properly? We don't know. So theoretically, we're going to, we should end up ahead, but we just don't know yet until we see what we get, right?
I understand. Thank you for that clarification, Bill and Ann, appreciate it. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'm sorry, that, that was, yes, that was the simple thing I skipped, step I missed. It used to be easy and, you know, X dollars times 8,000 people.
Yep, per person, and that's how it was, so.
We need to encourage our residents to buy their cars online.
There you go. Hey, well, let's keep going around the horn really quick. Let's see, going down one. Chuck, do you have anything on the budget that you want to comment on?
All I want to do is say the budget team did a great job and whoever put together that slide presentation, thank you so much.
That would be Trustee Kritz.
Very easy to understand. The spreadsheets are actually easier to understand as well, just because I looked at the slides first. So great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congrats again, Ann. Let's see, Rita, do you have anything for us?
Just a quick question. I think I heard this in the last couple of weeks. If I did, I don't remember the numbers. Do we have any input on how much of the increased four cents a gallon motor fuel tax would come back to the municipalities?
I have no idea.
If any. I think there was, initially there was talk that, almost that it didn't count, but I don't know how that could possibly be the case, but I, and I don't know how it shifted out. We don't have anything from IML on that.
I'll call them. My understanding was that's state revenue, that they were going to keep it.
No, it's in the Lake County, it's Lake County revenue.
It's county.
It's county. Yeah.
Oh, that one, okay. Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think they're going to share it. I mean, we may get the benefit of some of their work because we've got county roads.
Right.
So that would be our lobbying effort to continue. I mean, the pyramid of approvals, you know, goes through, it still goes through council and mayor's process. council and mayor's process. So we have influence and input. And we've got partners that would be friendly to us on that. But, um, yeah, I, I think the Lake County, the Lake County fee is intended to be for them and then our benefit would be if we can coax them into a county road improvement.
That, that was my understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if there had been any updates on that.
Yeah.
And I, I, a huge thank you from, from me as well and acknowledging all the hard work that went into creating this. I know it was intense. Thank you.
Uh, Jenny, any comments, uh, questions?
Um, Bobby hit my question, so thank you, Bobby. And, um, just re, wanted to reiterate that you guys did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have one thing though, I want to, go ahead, Anne, yep.
I was just gonna say, I think Denise is now probably into graduate level work in terms of the amount of research that she's done, done on the, on, on this budget. So I hope it's serving you well in the, in your current classes.
You're muted.
It is very much. I, I, I can't tell you actually how much I appreciate the opportunity. I mean, it just, it's, it's making my class right now so easy.
Our budget's so hard that the class is so easy, I love it. Um, I do have one, um, comment. I, I keep wanting to bring this up and I know Rita, um, and I went back and forth a little bit with Jeff too, but, um, on Checker Road, I would love to see a little bit of money in there for something to control traffic flow.
I agree.
I think, I think we have some money for it. And I just, you know, Jeff, I, I don't know, Bill, I don't know if you were able to get from Jeff, there were some, uh, dollars that, budgetary dollars that, uh-
Yeah, we, we can make, uh, Bill, we can make a choker work on Checker. Uh, I think we're within, um, I, um, where's Jeff on here? I think, I think we're talking about less than twenty-five thousand dollars. And we can make that work in the capital budget this year. And then it would be a material, physical improvement to deal with cut through traffic. And now, the volumes may surprise us in a negative way, but I think, you know, we've had some success over on Long Grove Road. Uh, volumes are still high on Long Grove Roads, but speed is managed a little more effectively. So there's probably be some benefit. Um, you know, cut through traffic is a menacing thing. Once it starts, people find ways, uh, find, find some ways around that. Jeff, was I right on that number? Are we, are we south of twenty-five thousand on that?
Uh, twenty-five thousand is the exact number that, uh, I threw out to Bill and Rita last month.
Okay, well, we can, we can make that happen and build that into the capital budget. We've got room for that. And, you know, the village has done unique things with, with traffic. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna re-line the entire no parking strategy for Checker. Um, Jeff and I are putting together kind of a spacing plan that would prohibit parking on either side, possibly as a pressure point to the forest preserve to add the appropriate amount of parking off-site. Uh, right now, it fills up real fast on a nice day. And, uh, people are going into the temple, they're going on the street where they, it, we're not a hundred percent, uh, signed right now for no parking. So we're going to be implementing that, uh, a little later on. We have the ordinance in effect to do that. So it's just a matter of getting the proper spacing and, uh, Elo will help us with the installation on that as well. So there's that and a, um, and, and a, and a choker, uh, at the right location might give us some, might give us some relief.
Jeff, what were the, what were the numbers on the speed tables for Checker?
Yeah, the speed tables were the other option that we considered. And there's kind of two options for a speed table. One is kind of a rubberized, uh, bolted to the pavement type thing. It's, uh, pre-manufactured and yet there is a concrete installation. The rubber pre-manufactured bolt to the pavement is cheaper, um, around three thousand dollars. However, that is very susceptible to weathering, aging, and in this climate, uh, snowplow damage, which hopefully is almost done for the year. Uh, the concrete speed table, uh, looks the same, uh, and the installation of that is, you know, somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. It's a, it's a small project, but very, very intricate. So that's the driver of the cost on that.
The, the, the speed table is not a speed bump. It's literally a table, right?
Correct, correct, yeah. It's got a ramp up on both sides, it's got a, a flat area on top.
You know, the problem with that is that you, you invite a, you know, the young people that, you know, are shifting from Cuba now, or the Cuba still has, uh, airborne capabilities, uh, over to Checker. And that's, that's the dilemma you face with those things. It does become a launch point for someone that wants to enjoy that cap of an experience and take their life in their, others in their hand.
Bobby, you have a question?
Yes, um, this, where would this squeezer be? Um, which side of, 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 um, uh, Schaefer?
It would be-
Checker.
I mean, no, Schaefer.
Yeah, it would be on the east side of Schaefer somewhere, don't know where though, we'd have to figure that out.
Won't that just push people to go west?
No, what we have is, if you recall the-
Cut through.
Yeah, the, correct. If you recall the presentation that we did when, um, back in twenty nineteen, when we were allowed to be in the village hall, we filled the hall because I, uh, put on the agenda, no right turn. And boy, that, that was an interesting conversation, but one that was really good. Um, it's in the morning you have, and by the way, we don't have this problem right now, but I anticipate we will as people get vac- vaccinated and get back to work. In the morning, you have people cutting through on Schaefer, making the right on Checker. They're coming from Lake Cook, making a left on a Schaefer, then they make the right, um, on the Checker, and then they make the left back on Arlington Heights Road. Um, at night, they do it the exact opposite way. They, they come off of Arlington Heights Road, make the right on the Checker, and then they make a left on the Schaefer to cut back into Lake Cook Road. And that traffic just backs up like crazy, um, right there on, um, on Lake Cook Road is what we saw. But there's also the issue of car speeding. So if we could strategically put at least one, uh, choke point there, you know, hopefully we would, um, slow the traffic down and maybe even make it, uh, so that it's not as convenient to cut through. So, I don't know, that's the thought.
Can we not put on Schaefer? The choke point?
Well, I mean, the issue, I mean, we could look at that too. I think, you know, where is the right place for it, right? That's the question, so, yeah.
Jeff, are there any research studies, redundant, I guess, on the efficiency of these options? I, I live near the, the choker on Long Grove Road and I don't know that it deters traffic. Part of me says it encourages people to blow the stop sign that they come to, uh, when they think no one's looking. And, and I also noticed that they like to speed up once they get over it to make up for, seems like it's, they're making up for lost time. So are there any, i- is there anything substantive, any data that speaks to these options?
Yeah, so our, our office, we, we took a look and to see what, uh, formal, uh, published data there was on it. And surprisingly, there's very, very, very little, like absolutely none. Um, but the, uh, you know, uh, your comments are in line with other comments I've heard over the years about, you know, the chokers. And, you know, I would attribute all of that to, you know, driver annoyance. And that is certainly a, a, uh, real thing. And if, you know, it's the cut through person that needs to stop and wait their turn, uh, they're probably going to be more annoyed because the whole idea was to save time.
Yeah, I, I think intuitively, if these things worked, they'd be all over the place. So I think that limited application might help, but it, it, Jeff's comment, I think, is apt. It, 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 it does tend to frustrate a driver who might otherwise be inclined to speed anyway, make, turn them over the top, so. But, you know, you have to try some things from time to time. And, uh, you know, we've got these one in place. It wouldn't be a surprise to Long Grove put in another one in place. And, um, you know, they're not wildly expensive. If we get into somewhere we were accident causing, we could always, you know, re, restore the original lanes, but, but it's, it's, it's a challenge. I mean, cut, cut through, if there was a strategy to make it work, other than putting an expressway through and keeping people, high volume people off of there, um, you'd probably see them all over.
I, I would be- Go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just gonna, no, I was actually gonna go drive back towards the budget and say so from a budget perspective, is the board, is the board direction to add twenty-five thousand dollars in there for some traffic calming to be, you know, type and location to be determined or not?
I, I would like to do something rather than nothing. Um, maybe, maybe we need a choker on Schaefer and maybe we need a choker on Checker. Uh, Schaefer is just as much a speedway as Checker is.
Well, Salt's Indian Creek.
Yep, yep.
So is Diamond-
Those Diamond Lake.
Yeah, so is Diamond Lake, right?
So.
Four chokers.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Twenty-five to a hundred thousand.
And to answer your question, I don't think it's an issue putting a placeholder on the budget. I'm good with that. I'm absolutely not in favor of putting like a one lane choker on either of those roads or municipal roads. I, I'm all in favor of putting more, uh, traffic signs, traffic lights, uh, you know, some kind of, uh, special enforcement with the police and the sheriff. I'm just not really in a fan of restricting people, especially our residents who are part of that cut through traffic from using the roads we pay for. I just, I just don't think it's appropriate. And I think the real issue is not, is, is not solving the issue because we're just going to pile more cars into the, the famous intersection down there. And that really is what's causing this. And if we're taking twenty-five grand, I'd rather put it into a PR campaign on I, against I dot to do something over there. You know, I mean, I, I, it's, it's just the way I feel. I mean, public roads, we pay for them, I pay, pay for the snowplowing, I want to use them. And I, I, I just don't think it's appropriate to slow everybody down, um, when a lot of people are following the law. But I do agree that we could put something else in there like traffic lights, police enforcement, um, you know, things we had done be, be, before with the special details.
Can we do like the speed cameras that the city's doing now?
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
Stempel doesn't allow us to. I looked at that.
Yeah, we need a hundred thousand people or something like that, or two million people, I can't remember the number.
No, we're just not allowed, period. Um, it can only be a red light here. And the only people that, the city of Chicago is the only one that can do the, uh, speed cameras, we can't.
From a budget standpoint, also, I, I know, just, I spent more time up at the brewery and you can make what you want of that. Um, we did some Zoom calls and things from that. I know Stempel Lot, we're, we're, we already have it in plan for resurfacing. I'd like to make sure that we, we've got the right amenities to make it a good parking lot also. You know, the little Walgreens across from St. Ray Church has two different types of electric charging stations for cars, four total stations. You know, a little sign that says forty-five minute limit kind of thing. But I would like to consider, you know, if, if we've got this surplus and it, this, these look fairly solid, especially in the capital budget, uh, making sure that we've got really good lights in there. I've seen that parking lot jam full and, and consider electric charging for cars that are electric.
Is that a revenue generator?
No.
I don't, I, I, now, I, like I said, I, I was just at the Walgreens. I mean, I don't know how many spaces they've got, you know, thirty, thirty-five maybe? At that, at Lake Cook and Arlington Heights Road, or, I mean, Lake Cook and Buffalo Grove Road? Um, and they've got four electric chargers. I think we, you know, with how many spaces we have at Stempel, we should really consider putting that in.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
Yeah, Rita's been talking about it.
Rita's been talking about it.
Yeah, she's already done some work, right, Rita?
Yeah, yeah. And some of the initial, uh, research, uh, has to, just off the top of my head, the communities who have gone forward with this have grappled with issues like, what do you do if somebody pulls in, puts in the plug and doesn't come back for three hours? How do you deal with that? How do you deal with the people that, you know, pulled in there at ten o'clock at night and come back at six in the morning? So there, there are some practical issues as well as financial issues. Um, and I will probably be able to give you a report within, give me two weeks.
Who, who pays for that power?
We do.
We do. We would. And, and by the way, all of our lights, all of our lights already have like just regular two prongs in them, both Stempel and our new ones. People have tried plugging into Stempel. It's really slow. It's real, I mean, that's a regular outdoor plug, it's really slow.
Wow. Well, so, so, um, not to, to belabor this a whole lot, I just was hoping we could put a little money in there for this. I know that we may need to add a little bit, uh, for the Stempel Lot for some amenities. Um, but, um, I'm just hoping that, uh, we can put something in and, and we don't have to finalize it tonight, obviously, uh, but we will have to eventually. Um, but that's really my ask.
What, what if we hired a police officer with jurisdiction? Kind of like, um, they used to do when CFI needed somebody to direct traffic mornings and evenings when the employees were coming in and out? What if, what if we had, is that possible? I, I have no clue what, what the expense would be between like se- seven and nine in the morning and four and six in the evening for, and, and usually, and, and it's really the speeders. Um, we have any idea what's, is that prohibitive?
We had special detail on there a little bit before.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, it's after eight o'clock, I can interrupt now.
Oh, jeez. Go ahead, Bobby.
Um, uh, the, the thought occurs to me, um, could we hire a, a, a general service officer from Buffalo Grove? Would that be helpful?
For, 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 for-
For monitoring that Checker?
Uh, yeah, I don't think they'll let you, uh, I don't think they'd let you use them for traffic control. It's not impossible you could get somebody in that situation. It may not be a GSO, but it could be someone at a different price point. I mean, you know, Rosemont has an army of traffic people that go out for their, when their events go on. So you probably can get someone now. The, the, the downside is what is the output? What, what are the expectations of that situation? Because I'm sure there, nobody's going to let a G, a GSO chase a speeder, even if they're, you know, if they-
No, no, but just being there.
Yeah.
Probably accomplishes most of what we need.
Yeah.
So I'd, I'd like to think outside the box.
Um, the question is, where do you have them? Where, 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 where along the route are they most useful?
Well, they're not gonna be standing, but they won't be standing in your intersection, you're gonna get killed, right? And, uh, and as soon as the, I mean, the police, yeah, of course we hope not. But, but the police, um, issue was that once we put the special details out there, um, as soon as they were gone, it started all over again. And as soon as they went and chased one speeder offender down the street, it left the street vulnerable again. So, um, that was part of the discussion we had with the sheriff. They, they didn't have a really good way to do it either. I mean, every time they came in and they were there, they had presence, it was good. Second, they pulled away, you know, it, it wasn't, it wasn't being adhered to anymore.
Well, this is the, go ahead, Bobby.
But we're like way off track, aren't we?
Yeah, it's a budget meeting, she was asking to put some money in, not to have it figured out.
What, what's the number?
Twenty-five, twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five, we'll figure out-
Twenty-five for that.
Yeah, and the best way to spend, you know, and I know, I do have to think through Stempel because that, that could get really big really fast. Uh, and we've got a, you know, we've got a nice size grant on that, but-
Stempel, uh, I have a plan for Stempel too. And it, that is, is can we put the conduit in so that we have a plan in place so that if we ever do want to put a charging station and it's all there, right?
Yeah.
So you, that would, that's what I would ask for.
They put solar panels in too.
Yeah, you could.
True, and, I mean, we've already got lights and conduit going in, I don't know, you know, if there's anything additional needed there, but, yeah.
That's a Jeff question, right, I mean, how do you set yourself up so it's there, right?
Yeah, and Rita and I had that exact discussion, it would be at a minimum, you know, uh, choose the location where the charging, uh, stations and parking spots could go, and then you put your conduit, just like you said, uh, Bill, uh, your conduit and, uh, mark the location, you know, so that way, if, when it comes up, uh, you can, uh, dig it up, find it, and then run the cables at that time.
We can get grants for that stuff too, so, yeah.
True, yeah, we should look for grants that way, do we have, I mean, the, when we redo resurface it, what are the plans for the current lighting?
I'm not sure we have a lighting plan.
No, we don't right now, yeah.
No, we don't.
I'd like, I, I'd like, I'd like to figure out i- if that's, if that's possible, cause I, you know, I went looking, it, they're, some of them are busted, some of them are cra- you know, is this really lighting us well? Those little electric things, cause I went looking, you open them up and, uh, the one I opened had Westneff in it.
Yeah, I, I had the same thing when I opened, uh, a few on Archer a couple of years ago, thank God it had froze the night before.
It's called, it's called, it's called nature, folks.
Yep.
So, and I guess.
So, do you, do you need a motion to put the twenty five in?
Um, I don't know if we need a motion at this point, right, so we just need to, I had to do it, yeah.
We'll put it in the budget, and then when you bring it, we'll bring it back to you in April, and then the vote would be for that. Anne, do you see a problem with that, I, I think, leaving a general evidence?
No, I think we should put the twenty five in, if that's clear the direction is there, and then my request, I guess, would be um, to ask, you know, Bill and Jeff and, and Rita, what are the options on Stempel amenities, um, again, for us to discuss?
I think that's fair, I think that's, uh, great, and Jeff, you, we could really use your help on that one, so, some ideas. Bike rack, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Why not, why not?